My daughter.
Okay, so I guess let's call meeting to order. It's the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, North Bend planning mission. We're calling it to order at six thirty P M. First, we're gonna do the mission roll call. Brian.
Present.
James.
Present.
Olivia.
Present.
Juliana.
Present.
Hannah.
Present.
Susan.
Present.
And Earl's accent, Earl's accent, so we have form if we need it. Uh, now, number two on our agenda is opportunity for the public to make a comment on our agenda items. Uh, we don't have anyone here. Luckily, they do have anyone online.
We did. Cherry Cooper's online.
Okay, and would they like to speak?
I'm good, Rebecca, thanks.
Good. She oh, she's good, okay. I couldn't hear, sorry. All right, then we'll move on to will be openly closed at six thirty-one. Uh, now we'll move on to our planning mission meeting notes from August sixteenth. Uh, has everyone had a chance to review it? Any changes? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes?
I'll make a motion to go through the minutes from August sixteen.
And second?
Give me a second.
All right, it's been moved in second, all the paper? Aye.
Aye.
Imposed? No, all right, they've been approved. Awesome. All right, so now we're gonna go on to our agenda item number four, which is land passing analysis and land use alternatives for twenty twenty-four comp plan. It's part of the housing elements. As I'm guessing, that would be like?
We.
Actually, Rebecca.
Oh.
But it's it's there screen.
Are you gonna give us a picture on the screen?
I have a presentation for you. Okay, so our housing element of our comprehensive plan. The Growth Management Act requires us to have a housing element as part of our comprehensive plan. Um, Housing Bill twelve twenty, as we've talked about in past meetings, had was amended this round of our comp plan periodic update to require our element to include consideration of capacity for the following household needs and building heights, including moderate, low, very low, extremely low income households, permanent supportive housing, emergency housing, emergency shelters, and duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. Today's discussion is gonna talk about the different income levels in moderate, low, very low, and extremely low households. As part of the housing element, we will talk about showing sufficient capacity for each income level within our zoning. And again, that's what we're gonna talk about today. That won't be the only thing we talk about as it comes to affordable housing. We'll have to come back and identify barriers and limitations of housing and come up with programs and actions for housing availability. But today, I'm really here to talk about zoning for capacity, not the other issues that we all know come with affordable housing. So in the memo, we talked about the different, I kind of broke down the different ways that we show capacity that's in the agenda packet and where we are at within our current zoning. And it basically shows that we are four hundred and sixty-two units short in the zero to eighty unit area of zoning. In essence, that means that we need areas zoned where it's zoned for fifteen units per acre or more. So anything zoned higher that allows fifteen units per acre or more than that, sixteen units per acre, so eighteen units per acre in our city. Generally, that in our in our city, that's in our some of our mixed use areas like our D C, our high density residential, things like that.
What what's the most I forget on the downtown commercial moderator that could be built that we have right now?
So due to our form-based code, code is way beyond fifteen. So if it's D C, it will meet that need.
Okay.
So um, I think I I put here C to meet our um, what's considered low rise. So our far three existing zones that would meet that need at zero to eighty is H D R, neighborhood business, and D C. Now, there's always the option, as we discussed in previous commissions that have recommended like a medium density residential. Those could come back at a fifteen unit per acre, for example, can be added to this area if that was the recommendation that we went for. But based on our current list of zones, those are the three zones within our current categories that meet that zero to eighty. So staff came up with some ideas to kind of get the juices rolling of ideas of what you guys might wanna think about in recommending these zones to the council. And so I'll kind of go through each one of those. Um, and we can have a further discussion. We could stop and discuss each one, or we can get to the end and then come back around and and circle out how we'd like to do this. This one's, this item is more like a council work study. There's no voting. We're just, you know, it's kind of a discussion so that we can get your ideas, um, go back and do analysis. I have, uh, I do have some numbers on what some of these zones would equate to in in meeting that deficit, uh, so we can discuss that if you want. Um, but just kind of wanted to, I didn't want to say this is what we have to do or or anything like that because I was hoping you guys would generate ideas we didn't think of. So um, we'll go from there. So one of the ideas is to take the E P zone that is here in gray on the top. So it's kind of, it's it it's dull because I've dulled the rest of the colors. I probably use a dull color. But the gray area on North Bend Way, which is our employment park zone on North Bend Way, and turn it into neighborhood business. And our neighborhood business basically is commercial on bottom and residential on top. Uh, so instead of the employment park with, you know, there'll be a lot of warehouses and other employment type uses, it would be commercial on the bottom, residential on top. So that's one option.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Where is that?
So it's this, it's this gray area right here on North Bend Way.
Um.
Or right here?
Like Schindler's Lumber is?
Yeah, Schindler's Lumber.
Yeah.
There's the
S T Trail is like.
Yeah, the trail is right here. This is the trail.
That's.
Come here.
There's there's a Dolgrin margins.
This, yeah, Dolgrin, Riverun.
Dolgrin, okay, got it. So for the building the new warehouses, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, some of them are. Absolutely, yeah. So some of this we could take a look at and look at the specific current warehouse and full amount of neighborhood businesses. Those wouldn't be redone that are already E P. But we just looked at it as a broad stroke at this point, didn't get too specific.
Okay.
So the next one takes into account some of the docket requests we got, but also what we thought made sense on do we want single family on North Bend Way? We think it makes sense to have single families owning on North Bend Way. So we suggested extending our downtown commercial just on this small area on North Bend Way. So what was yellow before? Now shows red. So just that small little area.
No, only corporate.
Well, downtown commercial is a mixed use zone.
Oh, it's.
So it it could be all residential, or it could be a mix, or it could be all only commercial, or it could be a mix of commercial and residential.
The thing that the downtown commercial zone also applies is a maximum unit size. So you're naturally going to get smaller units.
Okay. Yes.
And the red, that's not worth of building any warehouses, no?
No.
Okay.
This, I think we had three different requests in the in this area as it was on your docket list requesting a change.
East of North Bend Way?
Yes, on North Bend Way, just east of downtown currently.
And the front house is.
Right over there.
Oh, right over there? Yeah.
Okay.
Oh my god.
Okay, all right.
Sorry. My brain is literally spinning.
Okay, so the next one is consideration of areas outside of our city. Uh, so normally you cannot count capacity outside of the city unless you make annexation part of your plan um, in the twenty years. But one of the things that we're debating, whether we can get it accepted, is making annexation part of our plan if it incorporates the affordability requirements we want. So we could look at a few areas that says we're willing to allow this to be high density residential if a certain percentage of it, a higher percentage is normal, maybe higher than twenty percent, forty percent of the project is affordable. And of that forty percent, half of that is eighty percent, half of that is at sixty percent, something to that effect. So we can create a policy that says, okay, if the right project comes around, then yes, we support annexation, we will take that on. Therefore, we've got capacity for meeting our affordability needs.
So before we start talking about that, what what crosses your mind is if we were to annex those areas, um, what does that gonna mean for our expenses and and all that, you know? And and maybe there's income as well, I don't know. But like, how does that gonna affect us if we take on that? Now we've taken care of those streets and all that. Do we suddenly get funds from King County because King County's been doing this?
Well, there's different, there are different tax agreements. I don't know all the details. That definitely be a finance department um, discussion about how that works. Um, but more people, you know, whether there's subdivision in the city or or project in the city or outside the city, we're still serving those people one way or the other.
Okay.
For services. Um.
I just be curious what the numbers are and make sure that if we did that, that we suddenly have this like huge cost that's really messing up the best you know.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, you're gonna, depending on the project. If it's usually high density multifamily, most of the streets are private, just like Dolgrin, internal are private. So there there's not a huge cost of.
But what I don't mean that, I mean that like, what I mean is us taking on a whole neighborhood that we didn't take on before.
Well, the rezoning could be specific to areas that don't have existing neighborhoods. So.
Okay, maybe.
So one example, so one example could be that we rezone this area and we only take in projects that meet, like I said, that meet high density and it would have to be one big project and they'd have to all band together and we have to have a master plan, you know, so that's one idea. It's, you know, we have to obviously get into. And annexation as a strategy is something we'd have to completely flesh out. We just wanted to throw that out there. This annexation as a strategy would require us to rezone areas outside the U G A and make annexation as a strategy if the right project with affordability. So we're not saying we should make annexation as a strategy, period. Because we know that's not the direction is just annex. But maybe if the right project comes along that meets our affordability needs, it might make sense.
Okay.
And and maybe prefer over rezoning something in the city.
I thought it meant like we could go and annex an area and it's like, all right, now we've got our numbers. Could use to cover an area.
No, we would only, it would, we would rezone it and annex it when the project.
Yeah, okay.
Was proposed, not ahead of the project being, you know, being built.
Yeah.
We would do it before it's built, but we would have a project on hand and develop and integrate that kind of thing.
Okay, but what does that look like in terms of uh, hitting the what we need for the the law?
So my understanding, our discussions with commerce, if if annexation is part of our policy, we can count the numbers outside our city. So it's if something.
If something happened, we would do this.
Exactly. So if it's something that it's a, we don't know. We have to see what happens. This is the way to see it. We think it's within the rules and the way that they are requiring us to plan for capacity because we would meet the targets, the regular targets otherwise. So we'd be meeting the rules out within our city boundaries for our regular targets. But when it came to our affordability targets, annexation would be part of our um, policies to if we got an affordable project. And only if we got an affordable project that met those needs to fulfill.
Is there a, I know there's a lot of money flowing around out there with grants and things like that, and I understand that whole process. But I wonder if we could also look into when, if we were to do something like that, is also trying to get a grant to help them because we want them to be able to to service a lower base of the.
Yes, yeah, so once this, once these projects are our grants, so for instance, we apply for grant to help Habitat connect sewer. So yeah, so if a project came through, we could help apply for grants um, to, a lot of it are based on utility connections. So we can help them get sewer to there and help and and partner with them on grants for roaring.
Okay.
You could add other parameters to it as well.
Absolutely. Yes, there could be a whole policy setup. Yes, about when you would annex, what how, what we need to meet in order to annex. Um, the next idea is allowing um, residential in our interchange commercial above commercial. So so which what we allow in our neighborhood business, we don't allow it as a standalone. It can only be above commercial. So think about what if we redeveloped our mall and allowed residential on top of
I love that.
Commercial of the mall. Um, you know, I have numbers developed that it was just of the mall versus all of I C. So that was just, you know, one idea.
Tell us the numbers of just the mall, what's that?
Well, we'll talk, we'll we'll get to that, we'll get to the market.
To make for.
Yes.
Make for that price and.
Um, the other one is we, in in doing this research, it turns out our our interchange and excuse, which allows multi-family already, um, has a height limit of thirty feet, which is shorter than single family. So um, our suggestion is to at least adjust it to thirty-five feet, which is standard throughout the city, um, which will, because right now we basically assign no residential capacity to I M U because there's no multi-family that's gonna build at thirty feet. So by changing it simply to thirty-five feet will get a standard multi-family capacity within I M U. And we think that's an easy looking, this is probably the easiest squad.
Would you make this one that?
It will meet a twelve or four hundred number.
That one will meet.
I'm sure that will also have the number for now.
I'm P uh.
Or N. That one will meet one hundred twenty-eight units.
Okay.
Of course.
Now, how, 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 what, how are you coming up with that number?
Like. The same way we do the capacity, we make an assumption based on what what normal mixed use development might develop between, you know, what percentage might be residential, what percentage might be commercial, and what density might develop based on the density that's allowed. And so there's just a formula that's used based on practical standards of what is built in this region. And we apply it to what what land is vacant and redevelopable. And don't usually apply it to built out. But if we did things like the mall, we could make special, normally we would say the mall's not redevelopable. But if we did allow specifically and had specific talks, we could adjust the numbers to say we had talks with them, they are open, sort of the idea of redevelopment is no such thing. Therefore, we're calling this redevelopable even though it's not normally what you consider a redevelopable site.
I think it'd be really cool to have like, you know, five hundred square foot units that are like really cool, like excellent storage and like you'd wanna live there and have hot ceilings and, you know, Murphy bed.
The next idea is, I don't know if you guys were just wanted to know because it was, you know, our code currently allows cottage residential within low density residential, as long as you're within a certain distance from downtown. Um, so I had a thought of what if we also allow things like triplex or fourplex in that same area? Um, you know, that's one.
In the cottage residential, like in the cottage zone?
It's not the cottage zone. This circle allows cottage residential and all low density residential zone. So all those yellow currently allow cottage residential development.
What's the um, the numbers that you can count? Like, how many, is it like based on an acre, the number of fourplexes you could do or?
Yeah, so that has got a specific limitation on it that there's, it has to be a certain distance from other college projects. Uh, so that could be something we could consider.
That's similar, we could, but you know, you can only do a tri, you know, every triplex every gap, every five hundred feet, you have to be five hundred feet from another triplex. Or, you know, or not, you know, we we know. One of the things I think for a reason a triplex makes sense at at minimum versus duplexes, there's an E D U law that's gonna be coming into effect that we're gonna have to pass that requires us to allow two E D Us per lot that are required to be allowed to be either attached or detached. So if you're allowed to attach E D Us at a thousand square feet each, do you, can you really tell the difference between a triplex and a main unit and two one thousand square foot E D Us attached? I don't know that I would. So therefore, what's the difference in allowing a triplex and counting it as a triplex? And then you get more credit for it than you get a credit for an E D U. Because an E D U is based on your history of developing E D Us. For a triplex, you get the zoning capacity.
So like if you had an eight thousand square foot lot, which is what low density is right for?
Mm-hmm.
So then you put a fourplex plus two E D Us, then you get sixteen units on one lot, is that?
No, so an a a E D U is only on a single family. But if we allow triplexes, you'd be allowed three units per lot, period.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and and if we left it at single family with no triplex, you'd still be allowed three units, two would just be an E D U at a thousand square feet. Basically, it's it's another way of boarding it because you'd be allowed two attached E D Us.
And it's per lot, not for size of your lot?
No, it's.
Depending per lot.
It doesn't matter. Because you can subdivide, that would be, if you got a big enough lot, then you can subdivide and have two lots and have two houses and two E D Us per lot.
I was just at the American Planning Association conference last week and I extended the session about dealing with this. And one of the sessions was the city of Auburn presenting about an analysis that they did with one of their single family neighborhoods, that's a lot like Silver Creek neighborhood. Uh, large nineteen sixties lots, single family homes, primarily forested. Um, the analysis that they did showed that they can very easily achieve a lot of their target by doing this very same thing in a lot of triplexes in the single family zone. And what was interesting is they showed that the change that would occur would be very slow over time over the twenty year period. So they got all their capacity, but it's not likely to quickly change because it's a one year. Rather than.
That's not really coming in. So.
Let me move the circle.
That circle is based on our current code. So our current code has a distance of that intersection. I think it says it's like a three quarter mile from that intersection is the, is our our current, our current code is written. And so we just copied our current.
I know that one come in front of me with it.
So and 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 that can change. I mean, if we can, we can adjust it. I just, I just used what was, because the knowledge that we allow cottage residential in our single family, in our single family zone was news to some people. So I just used the same limitations to say, hey, we already love cottage. You could have a cottage next door if you live in this area. Do you, would you prefer a triplex that you might look like a house versus a cottage? Develop it? Some people might, so.
I like that it could be allowed. I don't like that it's a circle that doesn't match any parcel lines or lots.
Well, oh, there's, there's regulations on how much the circle has to be in the lot. You have to have the half, at least half the lot as being within the circle to to be counted. There are rules about if you're halfway through the circle, how much that way is. Uh, so, you know, that's basically where at, where we're at. I, like I said, I did do some calculations on there's some, also some high density residential in the urban growth, um, which gives us very high numbers because there's lots of area there. Um, but I just wanted to see if you guys looked at the map on the wall and had ideas, some other ideas we thought of is there's a couple of big vacant um, lots in the cottage residential that could go high density residential. That could make a big jump. Um, you know, they're in that um, in it as as one option in my recommendation. That's one of the calculations we did um, to look at that as well, so.
Uh, let's, I forget what's the difference between um, north um, neighborhood business
Mm-hmm.
and then downtown commercial because they both like to have mixed use.
So neighborhood business only allows residential on top of commercial. Downtown commercial you can do in the core, you can only do residential on top of commercial. But in most of downtown commercial, you you can have all residential.
And then in terms of the broader uses, neighborhood business is focused a little bit more on service type uses, um, a little bit more onto big manufacturing, light industrial type, scam and commercial uses.
In the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Well, and and another exercise could be also expanding zones, like if if we think we need another commercial zone because we want to expand the types of uses, or separate the types of uses we want in different parts of the city. Like I, I think we need to get rid of neighborhood business one and two. I'd rather call them different things. So I I wanna rename most of our zones anyway. So if you want an additional zone that's less confusing, we can put in a different, you know, like instead of neighborhood business, it could just be neighborhood mixed use. And and that would be there, neighborhood business would be the one that does the lot residential. And, you know, in the northern area. So, but if you wanted to break it into two zones because you felt, oh, well, we don't want residential mixed use that far from downtown, but maybe we're okay with it on part of that, but not the other half. You know, other zones, like I said, medium density residential instead of cottage or medium density and cottage residential, if if there's another zone, you know, the book is time, it's time to write the book. So it's pretty much what would you guys like to recommend to council? What would you like us to come back with with ideas? Uh, my basic schedule and ideas is to work with you through the end of this year with base recommendations, um, and then go to council work study in January. Take those recommendations, get a general direction from council, then write the whole code and bring it back through planning commission through formal public process and formal recommendation back to council. Because I don't wanna do, have you guys do all of this work and then circle back around. So I I I found a lot of touch base in the middle of this process of council um, in in January in the new year. And then come back and spend and do more of the formalized work with the policies and things like that um, in the new year. But hope, hope we get the mapping, the land use and the housing mapping done um, in the next four or five months, four months.
I think the easy, the easy thing for me before we we start talking about new ideas is it'd be nice if you had to stick to numbers on what this would do per one you've ever did.
Okay.
Because that'll, that'll dictate, if we did this one, it only gives us fifty. This one gives us four hundred, then that that dictates a lot of options that they don't have to sell.
Okay, so I mentioned this one would give us uh.
What is that?
One hundred twenty-eight, which is the thirty-five feet. But if you guys recommended
one thirty.
Forty or forty-five, we would get even more, but.
It's interesting the heights.
Yes.
I knew from thirty to thirty-five feet. I think we can stay if we go to thirty-five feet, you know, we'd freak out.
Yes.
Well, yeah, you're mentioning what the rest of it is. I think that's.
Yeah, so the I C zone, sorry. Let me go back to the beginning. There we go. So neighborhood. So the neighborhood business alternative would give us two hundred eight units. So if we rezone all of I C, the neighborhood business and kept this.
All the, all the green.
All of the gray.
The gray turned to the blue later. Two hundred and eight.
Two hundred and eight.
Is that all of the I C zone or just selected area?
That's the I, the, or I'm sorry, that's the E P.
E P one.
That's E P one.
Wow, I see.
I apologize. E P one.
Yeah.
To neighborhood business. The next one is looking at the um.
L D R D C.
Yeah, D C, which is a hundred thirty-six units.
They could use the three of those to change the orders. The three of those would get you your four sixty-two.
Can you have those?
Mm-hmm.
Those.
The three just.
Oh, all three, yeah, okay. Um, the um, doing the I C mixed use, so at the mall only would give you a hundred and fourteen units. All of I C, so both.
Or what would be the outlet mall?
Just the outlet mall, yes. So if we just allow mixed use of the outlet mall, it'd be a hundred and fourteen units. If we allow mixed use on all of interchange commercial, both exits, we'd be looking at about a hundred and forty units. And I came up with a few alternatives that all were more dealing with high density residential. So an idea included, um, if we, I don't have a map, so I apologize. But if we took this piece and made it high density residential, this current cottage, that'd give us two hundred and forty-one units. If we took this cottage residential piece right here, I think all of it actually, or no, just this piece on this side, that would give us three hundred and nine.
What was, what was Trina's number for?
What was what was trying to fill those numbers first one?
Two forty-one.
Is it more?
You just had about achieving cottage.
Cottage to high-density, I just wanted to get an idea, it could be, you could cut that in half by doing medium density somewhere in the middle. I did just, I wanted to get an idea of what high-density would get us, so. Uh, so I just was looking at that. Then I looked at, again, now the last three are outside the city. I looked at high-density at this site and that would give us a hundred and fifty-eight. I looked at zoning high-density at this entire piece right here. That gives us six hundred and fifty. And I looked at high-density at this piece. This piece right here, these larger lots, and that gets us six hundred and twenty.
You kind of missed these, right, though, so the so the last two you just said, would those be annexation jobs?
Those would, all three would be, the last three would be annexations.
Same with this, that one.
The one behind it is, this is outside the city, our city boundary is right here.
Got you.
So this one would be an annexation strategy. So those were just numbers for, like I said, ideas that I wanted to understand how much space
Exactly.
would be, you know, on some of these.
Your your fourth bullet point here on the rezones, looking at properties that which which have later was interested in rezones for residential and mixed use projects. Is that something like annex where we say we'll allow it if something comes to us, will we open up to it?
So that that was one where we got the dockets, but we could go back and do another round of outreach to see if there were additional landowners beyond that, like I know we have a landowner that has an EP one zone that would be more interested in not just doing residential on top of commercial, but doing commercial in front and true multi-family in the back. So we could look at how do we zone that to to accommodate even more units and and call that four hundred units capacity and take each chunk if we wanted that, you know, I know one of the ones lots that I mentioned, you know, that I might have mentioned in that outside the city is possibly interested in multi-family and and being high-density to the city, but we could do a bigger outreach to other, you know, just an outreach. You know, we we took docket requests, but if you're interested in rezoning your property, come back to us, I know another area, another site that's um constrained in a in another industrial zone that looks like they've they've got a small pad and pretty much what they may all only be able to do is do four complexes. Those four complexes with how dense they are may meet or zero to eighty need there too. So, but they, you know, and but some of some of them are dockets and some did get dockets in. So we can sit down and set up an entire, like almost a listening session of specific requests for zone changes and start and and think about those specific property owners separately than on top of this vision of what people want, or on top of this idea.
But then my main question though is the, in general, what we're talking about here is it was zoning changes is hopes and dreams. You're making this the zone available to development.
Correct.
You're not required to develop that.
Correct.
It's part of that idea.
Correct.
On top of that hopes and dreams, I mean, annex idea is even more so hopes and dreams, like if something comes up, will we we are saying we'll be there.
That is correct.
What you're saying there, though, would we still have to have those jobs um identified in order for that to pass? Or does is it just a matter of like the annexation idea, having something in our policies in our zoning that allows us to move on projects as they come on? Certainly, given some kind of number that says now that's for us.
So you have a couple options, our, the law only requires us to have the capacity. So we don't have to have the policies associated, and within our city, we do not have to have the affordable housing policies in order, it it a project can be developed, good, put this, project can be developed at market rate and still have been counted towards our zero to eighty percent. Um, the idea is that if it's fifteen units per acre above, it's more likely to be affordable to eighty percent or lower. And so the higher the density, the lower the AMI that it's allowed, it's the search. Um, we don't know exactly how that's going to end up when we do our five-year check-in and then a ten-year when it's time to do this again, they have not said, they've they've only, they kept saying that's ten, the the five years should only be the total road target number and that it's truly planned and accommodated and that we will not be held to any kind of actual construction of units. Because that's the current legislative team, that doesn't mean something's not gonna change, we're gonna set ourselves in a position of not having land because they want more affordable housing that's not built at market rate. So that being said, there is processes that can be done to provide things, I hate to call it density bonuses, but zone allowances like IC, like neighborhood business, like changing IC or EP, I apologize, I can't call you IC, EP to neighborhood business, but we only allow residential on top in that zone if a certain percent is affordable. Well, you do it as a performance standard, not an overlay. So you say, it's a neighborhood, it's a it's a it's a zone, it's this kind of commercial zone, these are the uses we like in this commercial zone. And it allows residential multi-family on top if you have twenty percent affordable. Then it's outright permitted, it's not an oh, you know, it's just an outright permitted use if you did restrict a certain percent. So we can do conditional zoning, yes, I'm trying to get rid of overlays. So I'd rather do it as a performance standard than call it an overlay. But we might have to get into, in a sense, overlays with the way that we now have to do affordability if we want to keep zones in certain way, but only allow them if we have affordability associated with it, allow a different use or different, you know, usually a density bonus gives you more units or more height. I I don't know that we're gonna get that through the council and give additional height or anything, so it's it would be more conditional. You can have residential if, or you can have more, like we do in the currently in the downtown commercial, we do it as a conditional zoning, you can get bigger units if you have a certain number of affordable. So if we put a maximum size unit, then you can have larger units if there are, if you have a certain number of affordable units. So we can do conditional zoning to encourage more affordable units or only allow the residential to develop in that zone like the EP zone, if there's a percentage that's affordable.
And I tend to believe this, the annexation and that last bullet point, that looking at properties form as an option in which nothing really has to change.
Yeah, I mean.
Or something that says it will, if something comes up, would it, we'll do it.
The the biggest issue of looking at specific properties, depending on what comes in, we don't wanna spot someone, that's not smart planning, so if someone coming in in the middle of low-density residential, we're not gonna just change it to high-density residential, so it still needs to be smart big areas of rezones, but that doesn't mean we can't take that into consideration of yes, there's this whole area where we have big property owners that are interested in change. And so I I I don't wanna imply that I'm saying every single, you know, individual property owner might get their zone um changed to what they want, but we could, if we've got a grouping of them, maybe there's an entire area, you know, when you guys looked at multi, you know, or a medium density, you took neighborhoods around the downtown, maybe there are other groups of neighborhoods that we see three or four, that if we notice all of them, you have a more a majority or can't, you know, more people that are interested in a higher density than they have. You know, or a majority that like triplexes than than people who want it to stay the same. So there's different ways to do it, but I definitely don't wanna encourage spots, I mean, it's not good planning. But we could still put out the word like we do for dockets a little bit better, maybe send it out through now that we've got the comp plan mailing list that we've been trying to push people to get on um and send out the emails that we can see if there are more people who are interested and telling us what they'd like for their property, what are their wishes, and then we can build that list and bring it back and see what what people want, what do they want allowed on, you know, there could just not be a rezon. What's your property, what's your parcel number, and what do you want allowed on your property? What uses do you want allowed, do you want multi-family, do you do you want triplex, a duplex, a fourplex? What do you want? You know, so that we can get almost a survey of areas that want what?
Yeah. I think I think what we're getting at for for us in this discussion is that to me, especially when you're talking about something with bigger numbers, you could do a a combination of these annex and looking at properties without changing the single thing to our thing. And easily cover those numbers. And we're.
I don't know if that counts though, right?
It does.
Yes.
Just looking at properties and going, maybe we might.
Well, we have to change, we have to change. We have to change or additionally zone it at least, so let's rezone it in a way that can, you know, be the conditionally zones and resumed, so it depends on the looking at prop, you know, we're looking at if we're sending out, you're trying to send out requests, so it depends on what the request get and what we rezone or what we wanna rezone.
But the and and the annexation is just saying we will, if somebody, but we would do that, we would we would.
If the project in on admit all of these standards that we could put together a policy that says it has to be all of these policy bullet points for us to.
But that would be a real change to the existing zones, again, I don't know anything like this.
Well.
It it's a promise at least.
Right, right. It's a promise, yes.
It's not it's not specifically doing any of these changes that we, the other ones we're talking about at this point.
No, I mean, I'm highly recommending we do the DC sub-change, I'm highly recommending we do the IMU hike change. Um I I think that the, at least the outlet mall consideration is a good one to consider, and that's three right there that I think are low-hanging fruit that it's you know, I I can tell you the the piece that that developer works out at the mall, I think you're not gonna see anything in this planning period. But it's it's something that you could start planning, that they could start looking at master planning for a mixed-use project there and start looking at um future of putting some residential in there, but I I don't see it being built in even to you, you know, I'd say twenty, but I'm sure ten, I don't see it. Yeah, imagine it happening.
I I think I think I'll call upon the cottage residential, um, so the lots that you're looking at, like those are zone for cottage, but they're just completely big.
One of us, so the one to the north is completely big, then the one to the south had is considered all redevelopable. So it's not completely big, it it does have, like I have a chart of some commercial, some residential that are there, so that one would probably more likely be a little more piecemeal because it's a lot of lots, you might get smaller projects throughout than one big project.
And then those are like currently just like single-family homes, they're not, it's not a cottage residence.
Correct, it's not developed cottage, developed cottage, correct.
Okay, I like that one too, I I think that's, I, it makes sense.
I mean, the other thing is to go, you know, we you guys are trying to do MBR, so we, you know, it'll be a longer number, but if we wanna put a density on what medium density residential would be, you know, and say we allow eighteen units per acre, medium density, I can bring back a number if you guys wanted to decide what medium density allowed um versus high-density, which is closer to much higher than that, so.
So I I have a question, um, workforce housing is like a big thing right now, like all of our leaders don't live in our area, live outside the area because they can't afford to live here. And 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 a long time ago, um, what was it, like early nineteen hundreds, they used to have tons of housing, even when you came here, in the beginning with Warehouser, they actually built all the houses for the people that came here, so like workforce housing. Um, people are starting in the industry talking about making small buildings for workforce housing, like. And and my question is, I've, have you heard boxable? I've been reading about it and I don't know if it's a like a Ponzi scheme or if it's a real thing, um.
Because workforce housing means something new to you, when you hear that?
Um, because it doesn't really workforce housing to me. It's not, not seen.
The current definition that most people work use for workforce housing, just to be clear, there's lots of different definitions. But a lot of people when it comes to talking in this avenue, a lot of people consider workforce housing eighty to a hundred percent AMI, which we are needing that number right now. And affordable is then zero eighty, so.
I was kind of envisioning, because I think that's a lot, like five hundred square foot units, um, similar to boxable, uh, really cool, like in times of not like a project. Um, and maybe even condos where people can buy it, so it's a low price and that gives them that ladder to go up the next level and buy something later type of thing, so. I don't know if if zoning is allowing for these little boxable things and what they'd be considered under, the, you know. Like, it's not really, yeah, it's not a tiny, but it's like in, like these boxables, if you look on the internet, they're they're pretty fast and they come in and they.
But neighborhood will ask, but neighborhood two, that actually is in the middle.
Yeah.
But I would be considering maybe we.
If it's attractive, it's on the same side as the same one. And then you, and just so you guys know, the new accessory dwelling unit law that we will have to pass, we have they did six months after our, uh, sorry, February, June thirtieth, um, I'm trying to remember, it's the end of the year, year period, um, allows them to condominium AMIs, the ADUs, so they will be able to be sold as condominiums. You won't be able to slot split them, but they can be condominium AMIs.
And then you can sell?
And you can sell your ADU as a condominium.
That's so weird.
That's interesting.
It is very weird.
Because I mean, that.
What about the people on that deck? Are they going to be able to build to ADU?
If they have the space.
And they'll have to figure out your subject situation.
If their subject can handle it.
And if they have sewer.
And if they have.
So they have to go up to sewer if they so if you're in.
A hundred and fifty feet, they think is the goal, you're a hundred and fifty feet from the sewer line.
Then you have to, but if not, can you get a new subject to accommodate?
Because you have the space, yeah. You have the space for that.
Okay, so if someone in a neighborhood that has sewer and goes by, but they're still on that deck, were to build an ADU, they wouldn't necessarily have to hook up to sewer?
I guess.
I believe they do, because they're a hundred, they're within a hundred and fifty feet, they're gonna have to hook up to utilities.
But if you have the space in your existing subject, I think that's how true, but if you don't, if you have to.
I have to check, this, the new law has changed, will change a lot of the regulations.
Yeah.
Um, there's different rules on what we, like, impact fees we can collect, improvements we can require. So connection may be different than what we do now, and there's a new feature to new rule, we may not be able to, subject may hold it, I have to review the law.
But then if your subject expands.
Then you're stuck.
Right, and you just were to have to.
Putting.
I just do it anyways, I.
So as I look at this, you know, there's, I know that we're talking about density. So I'm looking at density, but I'm also looking at how it feels with the rest of the zoning.
Right.
Because the when we're rezoning something, we can't just look at density. And I actually, I actually really support all these ideas, I think that depending on how the zone is written and how you know, if we can do design standards that help, you know, foster the recreation aspect, the gateway aspect that north bend is into the cascades, like we know we can foster that and as part of our identity, I mean, I think that we could have identity all day long and it doesn't feel that way, it feels natural to the area, um.
That was one of the ideas back five years ago now that the planning commission had recommended a medium-density residential, so council technically didn't choose to go with that, but that was applying some of those median and missing middle standards so that you have what looks like a conventional single-family home in the same bulk and dimension um area of a single-family home, but it could contain four units.
Right.
Feels like a single-family neighborhood.
And so that was one of you, like I said, we could look at bringing that back to the cottage residential zones and I took to those number rules, but that would be in the same two areas for the, as the, you know, density residential, so.
Yeah, I mean, each of these, I actually, I actually think that each of the things that you presented, I actually feel like it flows better you know, with what's around it, I feel like it fits. Um, I mean, especially like, you know, on the corner of Tanner, like that area, like to I forget what it's called, we're switching to residential business instead of.
Neighborhood, yes.
Yeah, I feel like that would be a much better fit right there. Um, we'll get to that, okay, because it's Shinna Plumber and then Big Riverland and then it's Dolbrin. It's true, but it just feels like.
The next to EP, you know, to high density, that's the.
Right, like we've got the new apartments.
Manufacturing right now versus neighborhood business is what we propose.
We've got tons of residential, especially the new apartments right there, and so it just feels like there should be some business. Something a little lighter than.
Some shops, those people.
Oh, exactly, so really, it's just like a small corner now, because the warehouse.
Oh, exactly. So really, it's just like a small corner now because the warehouses have been built and then there's like the snap tools and like the cabinet shops, so that's all built there too.
Right.
And then the brick and rungs and the numbers.
So but this is also comprehensive plan, this is the future, even if it's not redevelopable now, we can't count towards your numbers.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that there's not a vision that eventually that gets redeveloped.
Correct, so it's basically like just built, like they're still built.
No, no, I know, but I'm saying if you rezone and you, you know, you don't count it towards your, it's redevelopable, which we're not when it's already developed. But that doesn't mean that if you want something to change from an industrial type look to a commercial type look, that you don't change it now. So that fifty years in the future doesn't start to change, even if they're just being built now.
Right.
You know, one of the things we talked about when um you guys approved the um the development agreement for um Big Marine that we could change that line to eighty-two because it's right on the line. So that's an easy one to take out of neighborhood business and put it into the other E P zone. So that one that more matches that zone could go into that zone. Um and so we have one more, one left, even though we're making one more non-conforming, we could put one less non-conforming, you know.
Well, and it's like that zone too, I struggle with that so not, and I mean, I have no problem with it being there, but the transition from a neighborhood to that is it's a harsh transition. And so it feels like there needs to be some sort of buffer between them that helps like whether whether it's landscaping or whether it's something else.
And.
It's it's a really harsh.
Well, and for most of eighty-two, we still left technically in the overlay, we never removed that overlay. So there is a master plan that does have to be developed that does assess that buffer idea.
Yeah.
Of how is it, how is whatever project that's gonna come gonna work within the neighborhood?
Right.
As you said.
Right, and we we have to also consider like Truck Town is right there and that's.
Yeah, that's. That's a, we're already trying to buffer between Truck Town and there, yes.
Right, exactly, so it is like, I feel like there's like some finesse massaging that needs to happen there. But I feel like what you've proposed for these others to meet the density edge, I feel like it helps. Just the zoning in general, I feel like it helps with some of the buffering anyways. I will say, like, looking at properties scares me a little bit, like you said, it feels a lot like spot zoning, but with the right parameters, it could be okay.
Yeah, I mean, just to comment on uh middle. Middle. Yeah, I mean, what's that?
Midnight, middle, medium density. I think we were calling the zoning medium density.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's hard, I mean, to imagine like, you know, all these, you know, accessible lots and I want that would actually bring, um, or it's like, you know, the above the shopping malls, most likely gonna be apartments, but.
Yes.
We're talking about um people with, you know, lower income and a lot of these spaces are going to be very, very small if they have a family. Uh it doesn't really give them the opportunity to have comfort space within their, um, you know, their home. And I think, you know, looking at um a middle like housing density apartment, I think that would be really, really interesting to smart city. Just so we can actually bring in some different and diverse housing mixes to the to the space. I know we, you know, we have the mixed mixed housing options and all the good the good things that go with that and the cottage and the A D U and all that. But I think, you know, really defining that at some point, I'm sure could be smart or financial growth. I I the whole cottage idea, I know you you mentioned H T R um verbally when you were reading the numbers, but would that be considered a switch from like the cottage to H T R?
To, yeah, so that was, I just looked at the number of what would happen. Like if there was a simple fix of, hey, here's one lot that could go to a high-density residential, could we do, what would that number create? You know, obviously, it's one lot doesn't do it, but it was.
Yeah.
I wanted to see, I was curious, okay, that's two hundred forty-one units, if we take that one lot and change it to a high-density residential.
And so if we did medium.
It would, if you cut it, yeah, it would cut it down, correct.
Put it down a little bit. It would offer a different take.
It would still be higher than the current cottage, because I think I have a chart that tells me what the current number is. Um.
Medium density hasn't addressed the four sixty-two, right?
It does.
As long as it's over fifteen dwelling units per acre. So.
So it's not a medium density.
Well.
Well, I mean.
But you can, you can make a medium density that has a limit of fifteen dwelling units per acre.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like on Healy, um, I think those are originally workforce housing, the um, the top complexes.
I think technically at least.
There was, I think there was at least like.
I think our cottage is off twenty and thirty, our average is two.
That's that's not like a.
Like it's right, so it's just a really, that's our, it's cottage.
That's not.
You know, you know.
I'm saying.
Like the um the bend on Healy, uh maybe it's Orchard, um, it's like all the fourplexes, um, right across the street from the um lower income housing, I think, but what was that, King County House in forty?
Well, is there a longer river?
Yeah, the Long River, like those were, those were originally built for the workforce, um, like way back in the day, now they are medium density, I think they are medium.
That's just.
Okay.
It's kind of more of a quality.
Yeah, and then there's like, you get a counterpoint, so at least maybe sixteen, there's twenty and and that's.
I think we do them as standard eighteen.
Per acre, and we say we get an average of fifteen per acre, it would lead to zero.
Yeah, I only wait for that just because of what happened to cottages, right? They did not become what they were, what we want them to be, what the the point of the cottages was, so maybe.
Well, you can still put a minimum, you can still put a minimum dwelling units so that you don't allow single-family.
Yeah.
So the smallest thing they can build is duplex.
Right.
We can still put a maximum unit size like we did in D C, you know, our downtown commercial and that form-based code.
Yeah.
So we can still say the maximum unit size is two thousand square feet in in that zone.
Yeah.
We don't allow anything of bigger than two thousand square feet. And typology is duplex to fourplex.
Right, yeah.
That's what you have to build in our medium density residential period. I mean, it doesn't have to be what was previously approved, we can bring something new back.
Yeah. Yeah, I I mean, N B R is is not addressing the four sixty-two in any means, because in inherently N B R, I mean, means what's gonna become five hundred, six hundred thousand dollar homes.
Yeah, maybe the the current cottage should not be built here.
Yeah, that one. The the current cottage is not what was built, that's my point, okay. The city's largest.
We changed it for the.
Yeah, so we changed that one.
I was.
Right.
But we can still, you know, if you want, again, if you want it for, again, if you want it for, we can put maximum unit sizes and we can put bonuses for affordable units.
I was here, but that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can say, maybe we say, hey, we don't really want anything bigger than two thousand square feet.
Yeah.
But you can go up to twenty-five if you have, you know, or we go up by twenty percent if you have twenty percent affordable. Or something to that effect. So there's there's ways to give size, it's easier to give unit size bonuses with affordability than density bonuses, obviously, so. Because I have to, without, if we've got height limits and setback limits, we can't get more units, so.
And is there, is there a way when you make those kind of scenarios to make sure that it's still feasible for developers to build them? You know, no, it is, because if you don't, if you make it so they can't build them, so, I mean, you wanna make sure if you're gonna require them to have a lot of.
A lot of this, a lot of it's trial and error, we don't have, there's not many, it's still, there's still not enough builders that are that are like coming, you're still in fourplexes, right? So go, okay, here's our code, you build a bunch of fourplexes, is this gonna work? It's not like single-family development that we can just go to a bunch of single-family developers and run it by them. If it was single-family, it'd be really easy to test and talk to developers. It's much harder to come up to talk to developers who do alternative and talk about feasibility. So it's more trial and error, we put it together, someone's interested, we discuss it with them, then they tell us, hey, we have a problem with this. And that's what we start, then we come back to you guys and we go, hey, this isn't working, you know. Let's talk about tweaking the code, like, you know, we, the D C, we had people who were thought that the the unit size was too small. You know, when we did that one thousand and twelve hundred, so we went to council for work, so we can say, hey, people want bigger units, do you wanna consider it? They said, let's hold tight, let's see what happens for another year. You know, because they're saying it's not due, we wanna, you know, we just, we still want some, or we want, we didn't realize you were taking away single-family, we don't want single-family, so do we want it? Is that really the intent we wanted, D C, do you want us to put that back in? And they said, no, let's hold tight. So we, you know, we put something together and it turns out, we keep hearing it's impossible over and over, and that's when we come back to you and we say, hey, what what can we do? But feasibility or not, we still need to stay law.
Yeah.
So if a if something isn't feasible at the density, then it's then it's not time for it to be developed right now and eventually will be feasible. Because eventually it will be worth building, because the cost will get there.
That's a good culture, because we're not used to building, because it's not.
Yes. Yeah, right.
Personally, I'm I'm an advocate for not doing something like that, and it's not, I think that probably excited. To me, if you're gonna address the four sixty-two, you address it with apartments, you address it with above commercial, where you know it's gonna be affordable, relatively affordable. I think you go, you talk about N B R, you talk about cottages, you talk about any kind of single unit like that. Um, I think part of the market here dictates that that's gonna be not affordable. And so for me, at least, by my opinion, we should be looking at above commercial apartments, something like that that pushes to a smaller.
I agree, I think we try to, colleges can be affordable and accessible, that was not affordable.
Don't worry, it's affordable.
Oh, yeah, nothing.
We're thinking.
Yeah, that is, because I, that's what I'm saying, I think that suddenly you think there's something like that where you're.
Those small units.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the biggest difference, because when you look at a Phoenix, kind of River Run and Alum, Phoenix has small units.
Yeah, those apartments.
Phoenix falls up, yeah.
Oh, the one that owner building or the one, a crack, but it's gas station.
Yeah.
Yes, those those units, those apartment units are small, those are our smallest units out there, I believe. You know, when I when I started, I, because I did, I did a count, I don't know where that presentation is, but I did a count of, those are smaller than the habitat units. Like our habitat units are bigger than twelve hundred, that's why, that's why when we started talking about what the right size for D C is, I was like, oh, wow, we zoned, we zoned out habitat from, you know, that kind of thing, you shouldn't be a little bit bigger, what's the right size? But those units are closer to, you know, six hundred, eight hundred, there's there's a mix in there, but they're small, they're smaller units. Where we're, you know, where we, everyone thought K U would be affordable because it's, it is the same metal, but those are two thousand, you know, those are over two thousand, some of them are over two thousand square feet, they could, those are single-family homes up there.
It's large.
So it it it's not gonna be, just because it's connected, it's still large square footage, so therefore it's gonna drive the price up for a square foot. When or the the price is gonna be high because of the first square foot, even though the first square foot price is gonna be lower in a mixed-use project than a single-family project, the price is still gonna be high in the square footage side. So putting unit limits like we did in the D C is a good way to more predictably, without putting restrictions, more predictably get more affordable prices, because units will be smaller.
So the reality is, we want four hundred and sixty-two really small units to have, so I think that's what our goal is, okay. That's.
That's my follow-up.
Yeah. No, it's.
It it again, we, as long as we, we have different ways of getting there, yes, we we can, we need to rezone. Make room for our energy, we can purely do it by density, but we can also put restrictions by unit size to to more likely get affordable units out of it, then we won't get just people building in our area. And and however they want it, yes.
So if we did the first one, um, the implement E P one to, it's two hundred and eight, if we did that one, if we did the second one, and if we increase the height,
Yeah.
I feel like we're there, if we. If we do the whole one forty, not just the mall, if we did all five, that means we're there basically.
So two oh eight.
E P one, one thirty-six.
One thirty-six.
And then, and then one forty, oh, and one twenty-eight, right, there's no way.
One forty.
Just one.
We don't even need, yeah, we can just do the one fourteen really, so let's do.
All of them all.
Just them all, we did one twenty-eight plus one fourteen, well, one thirty-six plus two oh eight, that's five eighty-six, that's.
Yeah.
I don't think we should get extra credit points here, we are really good at extra credit and then. And so that always comes back and it's like, oh, you didn't so good, and now there's why you can do even more, so.
Okay, um, I.
I'm like, thank, I mean, like, I don't.
Is there, is there an?
Can you go back to your slide for the L D R D C? The red. You're just talking about the red, not the top yellow?
No, not the top.
Yeah.
Sorry, I had her map the yellow first, you highlighted all the yellow, I'm like, this is a little sucks.
It just feels natural to do that.
Yes, it does, it really does. Uh, there's.
The L D R D C.
You're you're gonna go?
I am not gonna make my opinion.
Um, are there, can you, can you guys give me just. If council were to throw out.
One of them.
One of them.
What's backup?
What would your backup be? So for instance, say they didn't like rezoning eighty. What would you put as your next favorite option?
I think they have that one, the, the all I see is the one, right?
Which one?
We don't.
But I see we're only at thirty, I guess, so that's not gonna.
And.
But I mean, that's a hundred and forty that matches. You're saying the one with all I see.
Well, that. All I see includes the outlet mall, so it's not together.
Exactly. I was thinking we just talked, we talked about E P one, L D R, and the height change, because that gets us to four sixty. We don't need outlet mall and all I see to get four sixty.
Outlet mall, you can't count both outlet mall and all I see, because those two, one incorporates the other.
I'm okay. I know, I'm not gonna mean.
Okay, so you were just doing two oh eight, one thirty-six, and one twenty-eight?
That gets us to one sixty, four sixty, no, I'm sorry. Well, so we'll try that some more.
It's a, one of those is thrown out, it's right back.
So your outlet, your I see is your outlet, is it?
Yeah, so the.
Okay, so that I think we do the back.
Some I see is the back.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't mind, I don't know.
I feel like it's natural to do, like, it's absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. The one forty for I C, even one fourteen is like you said, extra credit.
Mm-hmm.
That's our backup if they throw any of the other ones out.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, the two oh eight would hurt that, but.
Yeah, if they're on the two oh eight, we.
Yeah, I'll eliminate it here, I see maybe you're posting for breakfast, there's not. It's close to the freeway.
And.
Yeah, I see, I see, the only reason I see might not be low, it's a criticism, would have to change height, so that politically may be harder to do. It might be more likely than it's right next to the freeway, especially the mall specifically, and only at the mall might be easier. Um, but that one specifically would require height change.
Yeah.
What what is that, the hotel? Or, I mean, I know that's planned to take it further, like, is that?
The, they're outside of the.
No, they would be specifically approved for hotels only outside.
That's, yeah, sure.
That's not, it because a hotel has a specific exemption for the.
So the rest of the mall can't be seen.
Correct, yeah, but we would need to look once, that's, that might become low, maybe for once they see the mall and see that it doesn't affect anything, or you just says, that place doesn't bother us, we're good with residential up to that height and the rest of the mall. But until they see, physically see that, until everyone physically sees that, says, hey, there's no blocking of views with this mall, with this hotel, maybe we're comfortable with it there.
Forty-five, forty-five feet in the hotel then? That was forty-five, right? No, it was, it was.
I can't remember if it was forty-five or fifty, so.
I'd say fifty.
I would think it was fifty, but you're like, you.
I would say the first top bar is what kicked it over.
Yeah, it kicked it over.
But I I think, well, here's a question.
But if we still allow the rest at forty-five or, you know.
Are are we, I think we are, but are we, to one of, do we wanna recommend all four? And say we advocate for these four, or do you wanna get presented as three of them, this is extra credit?
I would say just gonna look at the four.
Yeah, I'd say.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, I'll just, I'll just say these are the commission recommended options, I'm not gonna necessarily put.
I mean. Yeah. Yeah.
Even for second or third, say.
Right.
Because all of them together is almost six hundred.
Right, well, the commission will give us direction, council will give us direction back.
Yeah, the recommendation.
And we'll go from there.
We still have the recommendation.
And you could still be able to take, even with their direction, you guys will still be able to make a formal vote and recommendation, even, you know, you're still the recommендee body, so no matter what their direction is, they may say, no, we like these four, take that back to them, you guys can still make your formal recommendation with what you guys want to recommend. I just wanted to get an idea to take back to them and any new ideas you guys might have. I still think we, we need, we still need to come back at the next meeting is what my hope to do, is to talk about land uses in general. Now, we're no longer filling the hole, because there might still be other residential discussions that could have changed these numbers that people are coming in that aren't specific to zero to eighty, but talk about what are the vision of land uses, what are the uses we want to go in different zones? What, besides housing, so the land use map too. Um, so there's there's still a bigger broader picture that we still need to discuss, or this isn't necessarily it.
Yeah.
But I've got kind of it marked down here as ideas and your recommendation, and we'll move into further discussion around land use and other ideas besides just the hole we're in. the hole we're in, for income brackets.
For your answer, I'll make sure my answer right here, are you talking about the I C zone, the entire zone, or just the outlet?
I think if you're gonna recommend all four, just go with the outlet mall then, because I don't think people are.
Yeah, I, I would mark this the outlet mall, or there.
Okay.
Right. I mean, the rest of that, I, well, I guess, not kind of checked out, but the rest of that I see now is the residential, or residential.
Yeah. But, yeah.
But yeah, just.
Yeah, the actual thirty might not be worth it.
Thirty, yes.
It's a burden.
That's a normal.
Yeah. Okay, because we're gonna have to bring back.
International, keep talking, sorry.
Eventually, we're gonna have to bring back and discuss permanent supportive housing and all of that, because we did adopt a code um, related to initially use permits when that law first came out, but we're actually gonna have to do an analysis and talk about whether we wanna change and allow it everywhere, you know, like we can just outright allow it everywhere, I believe everywhere hotels are allowed. And then we don't have to do a whole analysis, or we can do an analysis in terms of we've done an application for permanent support housing, similar to what we've done with it. So we'll, we'll have to kind of discuss that at a future meeting as well, what direction we wanna recommend going as our feeling for permanent support housing and our decisions, so. Thank you, and we'll go to our next slide.
That's me.
Or, sorry, here. Let me get out of my.
Alright, so, um, super informative. I think that was a pretty special one today, I guess we haven't discussed a long time, so we are like.
Right, yeah.
Um, so, uh, now we're gonna move on to economic development element for the twenty twenty-four economic plan, and we have a guest speaker.
Yeah, that's true. Well, good evening, everybody, my name is James Henderson, I'm actually the new economic manager for the city of North Bend, so this is my, I think, my sixth week here, so definitely a veteran. Uh, doing economic development for quite a while, uh, both in this state, developing San Antonio, uh, some various counterparties, but also in Texas and the cities as well. So it's great to, great to meet you all, and, yeah, look forward to working with you. Uh, so my task this evening basically is to, uh, basically introduce the economic development element to you for your review and consideration, and also for public comment. Uh, much like the planning document element that was, uh, talked about tonight, really, the economic development element is really kind of putting out there sort of your hopes, dreams, and goals, aspirations of how we can provide economic opportunity for both residents and businesses, and, uh, so there's really kind of three components to it. One is looking at the data statistics behind how the economy is doing here in Bend, uh, both trend line based on past, uh, past economic data, and also potentially what uh, sort of lies ahead into the future. Uh, it also provides the strengths and weaknesses of North Bend, I think we have talked a little bit about it here in some of the planning work, specifically sewers, utilities, other types of, um, uh, infrastructure needs that are really necessary to foster economic growth in North Bend. And then finally, policies, programs, and projects, really kind of strategies essentially, to how we really, uh, implement the economic development element and bring those types of opportunities here to the residents of North Bend. So that policies and projects, that is largely, um, derived from the economic development action plan that was put by council this past June. So it'll look extremely familiar to you, because it's basically just taken from that document, in terms of what their main goals and strategies are for the city. Uh, so basically to put together the economic development, uh, element, the, the economic development commission and staff worked on this, put this together. And then the meeting that was held last month on, uh, September twenty-fifth, the commission approved the motion to forward the element to you all to take a look at and provide your comments to it as well. So with that, just, you know, formally presenting it to you all, and, uh, hopefully.
And so this is an optional element to our comprehensive plan, um, we do already have this element, so it is an update to our element. Um, as we mentioned, it went through our economic development commission, which is the only element, although through another commission before it gets to you guys. Um, but it has, you know, so they did the, the bulk of the work, um, with, um, Mark and the names before coming to you. So, we want to see if you have any comments before we, you know, put the public hearing for the next meeting, and if there were any edits, we sent it out to the tribe for review um, and comment, we asked them to get it back to us, I believe by the twenty-sixth, so that we could again incorporate any comments they had before we sent out the public hearing, you know, before we had the public hearing as well, um, so, yeah, so.
Um, I had a question for you earlier, I think it's for, um, but I have a question, so B point two, um, references the twenty fifteen plan, and then further down the page, um, it gets in, um, the B point four, it references the two thousand and eight downtown master plan. Um, obviously the two thousand and eight one's pretty old, but, um, are we able to just like link those, I mean, people are curious, like, okay, you know, like, there's a list of four things that the city listed here that like were done between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-two.
Absolutely.
It, it would be good to reference. Because I see, I see some upcoming initiatives that are listed directly under, so that was just one call out, and then I did just wanna say, I appreciate it, it was in uh, B point four, other commercial districts, the, uh, discussion about, you know, opportunity sites for, um, downtown areas, um. You know, I, I mean, we just talked about like this rapid growth for new housing, but our, our new town sells a lot of vacant spots that, you know, they're not quite lighted, but like, they're, they're on their way of like, you know, getting, uh, needing a new jerk overhaul. Um, and I think that is a big emphasis that a lot of residents would love to see is the city taking a little bit more, um, you know, that direct control with the land, or obviously the business owners, they have the, they're responsible for it, but a little bit of push and mention incentive from the city, uh, might actually get some change and some new, new opportunity in some of those sites that are just shut down, closed out.
You never meant the land over.
I, yeah.
All I'm saying is you.
I, yeah, I, I briefly.
Absolutely, we can add, after this is all approved, when we did the final, we can add hydrants to preference options.
Oh, yeah.
I felt the same, I really felt like when I was reading this, I was like, we're just tapping it out on the area, like you did really.
Yeah. Yeah. Big, big area.
Yeah.
But yeah, great, great job.
Any more input?
So are we changing our slogan? Whatever that's written. It was like, if you. It's a different. Yeah, and now it's gonna be here, a highly livable small town that is a premier after recreation destination, it'd be.
Yeah, that's a brand statement.
That's a brand. Oh, we're still like.
But still.
Okay.
But on song, page ten of the landing, three of the.
That's not a one on a T-shirt, that's.
Yeah.
That's right.
No, that, that's still, I think it's still part of the branding book, right? That, that was already in the previous branding book, too.
Yeah.
At one point, we, we not allowed to call it a small town anymore.
Yeah, I think the nationalities, uh, since ten thousand.
Well, it's, okay.
Oh, it's good, it's good, right?
Yeah.
More about that.
Next chat.
Always comparative, it will always be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I thought it was terrible, I didn't know what to.
Anybody else? Any comments? Is there, is this just an introduction for right now, so there's.
Well, we wanted any of the lines you guys had, that we would be able to edit for the public draft before we send up a public hearing, so.
The goals were that they, you know, they're achievable, and they're not outrageous, and they're not all hopes and dreams, some of them are like.
It's an odd element compared to the rest, where the rest are really policy and business, so it's a little bit different in space on the action plan, but.
Yeah, some of it are very tactical, some of them are very strategic, it's like a.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, it's a, it's a different kind of. Of that being.
A little bit important.
But still very.
That's, it keeps us up.
That's right.
Well, thank you.
I know, I think it's great so far, and I, I just, after I've processed it longer, I hopefully will not be like offensive if I come with an idea later, but so far it's great.
Oh, we just, yeah, I mean, there's some, we've got two introductions that will be ready to make a recommendation, and not either, they're, you guys are always welcome. If you're not ready, you can change it before you make your recommendation cancel, so, this is nice, that introduction is be prepared before we launch the public, but there's nothing that prevents you from making changes after hearing the public, that's the whole point of a public hearing, yes, sir.
Um, my one question about potential negative, uh, reaction to this is, so in B point four, um, there is a reference to two thousand and eight downtown master plan. And, uh, there's a little bit, it says, the two thousand and eight downtown master plan established and attractive, I think it should be established, but, um, it talks about this graduate gateway concept for the corridor, um, along, it's been, uh, been ago, but it references like, it should still be pursued, like, why hasn't the city done anything? Like, I think I read it, that's like, like, well, now it's almost been twenty years, um, it's like.
He's working next to six, he's in the prime.
But maybe that could be like re- rephrased just a little bit, or, um, you know, I, I don't know who, who owns that gateway, or if the gateway is done. Uh, I haven't seen.
Who, what is it?
Or what, what is it? Yeah, uh, but that's just like, something that like stood out to me is like.
Which page are you referring to?
It's, um, on page nine, um, B point four.
Sixteen.
Four sixteen.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Is it in the.
For each, uh, for each sixteen.
Okay.
It's it right there, uh, in the second sentence.
Honestly, I think a lot of that just has to be a redevelopment, so, as redevelopment occurs, like with the outlet mall and with the property, it's.
It also makes it a vice, you can get down with them.
Is it, you have to, that's my.
That's where it probably makes.
Or establish it.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, that's what I mentioned earlier, yeah. Okay, so the, the gateway concept is dependent on development.
It's a lot.
Not entirely, but that's gonna be a, a driver's.
So either can we less provide funds, do we give it or card capital improvements, or we put projects together, we do frontages, and that's what happens, that's how it.
Yeah, maybe you should revisit the, the phrasey, just so that, that would be my main recommendation.
The word, yeah, that's.
Is that, that was supposed to be like a long and a dense street, so it was supposed to be.
Trees and trees.
Yeah.
Yeah. See that.
This is, I have, I'm just thinking of streets, anything that was that, that goes, says Ben Dingo, I drive by that sign every day, and I'm like, why does it say Ben Dingo?
Where?
Where it.
The one street sign spelled wrong?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Uh-huh, every, every time you drive by it, it's like right across from, um, Tollgate.
Which one?
It's like, that sign that says Ben Dingo. And I have no sign, and I'm like, God, tell the story.
It's like, how does I say it wrong? I think this place was being one street sign.
It's like, I'm in Dingo on the sign. I even like looked it up on the map, and like, no, it's Ben Dingo, right?
Someone had a dog named Ben, and it was a Dingo dog.
And have it first to type along with the, 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 the.
And two hundred thirty-two from thirty-one, the street sign on the right by the river doesn't have a space. That's.
Well, it's.
That's an accident.
Now you're gonna skip it.
Okay. Yes, the, the, so I think it's, it's, uh, like, for whatever street is, Avenue Southeast, Avenue Southeast is actually, there's a.
Uh-huh. Uh, so it's Avenue Southeast, it's one.
Well, it's not from home sign. Any other? Oh, alright, well, that to you. Okay, so, um, at this point, we can conclude the meeting, and it is seven fifty-four, and, um, we can all. That's a professional way of ending.